Yeah, I just want to welcome everyone. I saw Raymond has dropped in, so welcome Raymond. Dawn and Norm and I are here and I expect we will see Graciela momentarily. I'm especially pleased that we're able to get back to our equity work. Kind of took a hiatus over the holidays and that's okay, but we need to get back and start, get our focus back again. So, thank you all for being here and I'm just gonna turn it over to Trevor. Do you want to introduce Marcus? We will take role, because this is a study session, we'll take role at the beginning of the business meeting, beginning of the meeting after this session.
I would simply, thank you President Rice. I would just simply echo that returning to our equity work is something that we should not skip in the future. We had some very pressing items that needed to be surfaced over the last month, but with our new schedule, we'll make sure that we have multiple opportunities per month to move us along. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Pimpleton to lead us through the second half of our cultural autobiographies, I believe is on the deck for today. So, Dr. Pimpleton.
Yeah, and so I guess I just want to kind of frame the purpose, make sure that I'm re-centering the why. We started doing this in November and then we ended up with this really long break, so we're coming back to where we were. I am really excited about the conversations that we've been having with cabinet, with the school board, with our Equity Coalition. We have a Student Advisory Council now that is, has 45 students who are diving into these issues. I've been able to work with multiple schools, even the schools where people are like, "I don't like that guy and I don't want him back here." I'm enjoying all of it because this is a really important conversation for us to be having and it's letting me know, I'm getting to know the people that I'm working with, that I'm in community with. I have a better idea of where we're at and are thinking about this stuff. And I am convinced that before we can look at how race and racism are impacting student outcomes, we have to have done the personal self-work of looking at what are our attitudes and what are the messages that we are carrying with us related to race. And so that's what this is about, is about reflecting on our life experiences and what has been the role that race has played in our lives and what are we, what's the baggage that we're bringing to the table around race so that we can really see things that we might not be as aware of otherwise. And so, we started doing that work. I think we had two board members who shared their autobiographies in our November meeting, their racial autobiographies, and then we had, I think it was Norm and Graciela who shared, and then I think we were hoping for the other three to be able to share today. And hopefully, a year from now, some of these conversations that we've had will be a part of your new racial autobiography story and there will be some learning from each other that's taking place and it's a work that always continues. But, we want to continue to do that and know each other's stories and we're gonna be doing some important work together moving forward. So, I don't know who wants to go first, maybe we'll say ladies first and have Martha share.
I have the security team on alert right now, so I'll do my best. And they are around the corner, so they've gotten smart. They know that the sprayer doesn't go around corners. And it's cold outside, so they just bark through the French doors. Okay, I was born and raised in central New Hampshire. And if you know anything about New England, you know that New England is not especially diverse. And when I was growing up, there were no families of color in my community or in neighboring communities. The first exposure I ever had to a family of color was when there was a Cuban family that moved in and the dad was a professor at the college in the next town over. And his son was a year behind me in high school. So that was my first exposure to any individual or any family of color. When I was growing up, we never heard the word diversity. If someone were to ask, so if someone were to provide the people in the town that I grew up in, which was a very, very, very small town, what diversity was, after they were provided with a definition, their relationship to diversity would be to identify the French Canadians who lived in the town. So they were, I had very little exposure to any diversity when I was growing up. And then I moved out to San Bernardino, California, in my early twenties and it was, there was a lot of diversity in San Bernardino. And so those, that was my first real exposure to thinking about race and thinking about culture other than the white culture. And then from there, we moved up to Yakima and started a family and eventually I got on the school board and that's when I really started thinking about race and what, what the effect of race has on families and on communities. And then I did some self-learning and became close friends with folks within the school director world who had been much more immersed in this, these learnings than I was. And so they helped me kind of find my feet, so to speak. I can't begin to say that I am well-versed in the area of race, but I certainly am more aware of it than now than I ever have been and really look forward to, to the work that we're doing and seeing how, what we're learning and what we're doing here can have a positive effect on the kids in Yakima. I think that's it.
Thank you. Raymond?
Can you hear us?
I can now. I'm trying to shut down my other devices because my connection is very weak. So, am I next?
I was gonna have you go next.
Sure. Okay, I'll go ahead and start. So, you know, because I consider my history even before my parents, part of me, my culture, I want to start with my grandparents. So, on my maternal side, my grandmother was born in Oklahoma and she was a migrant farm worker that migrated from Mexico into Oklahoma every year. And I guess my great-grandmother couldn't wait for them to go return to Mexico, so my grandmother, maternal grandmother was born in Oklahoma and my grandfather was born in Durango, Mexico. He somehow met my grandmother and they got married and he started working for the railroad. I don't know which company it was, but somewhere in the Midwest, he joined up and they lived on a train car for a number of years. And they ended up, I guess, at the end of the track, right, which was Los Angeles, California. And so, my father, my paternal grandfather and grandmother are from Aguiladis, Texas, which is just south of Laredo. They moved to Laredo, Texas and then, for some reason, my grandfather decided to move to Nebraska of all places. And he moved, they got, they, he, the story that I, that I heard was that they all got in back of this big old truck, a flatbed truck, and they put, somehow had some, I don't know, like wooden panels on it and they went like that. They traveled that way with a bunch of kids, 14 kids and two parents to Nebraska, and they ended up in Llewellyn, Nebraska. And they couldn't find a place to stay because they couldn't even go into the local restaurant, use the restroom. The sign that they told me was "No dogs or Mexicans allowed." So, they somehow managed though, you know, I give my grandfather so much credit and admire him so much because he, he made it. He made it happen, even with all that racism that he faced. He was able to find a home, establish the family there and, you know, find work and they really got established. And then they moved to Ogalala, Nebraska, where they, where they were, you know, more stable and, and so, my father was born in Laredo. He was probably in his early teens when he went to Nebraska. He was kind of one of the more free-spirited ones and I had a Harley-Davidson, so he would, and that's, again, that's part of my, in my blood as well, right? So he would take off and he and a couple of brothers rode all the way to Los Angeles and they loved it there. So they decided to stay. And so, somehow he, while he was raising ruckus in Los Angeles, he tells me he found the Lord, right? And he was, he converted. He, he became part of a church and the church that he went to was in Watts, California, where I was born. I was born in Los Angeles and I was born during, in Los Angeles during the Watts riots and we actually lived in Watts during the time. And my, my mom would tell me stories about the rioting, the chaos, the burning, just everything that was going on right outside her front door of her apartment. And my dad, he owned, he started a swimming pool business and so he would go to Bel Air, Hollywood, San Fernando, and I recall going with him to John Wayne's home, his mansion. And I, as a little kid, I would just, I would sit right on the corner of the pool, I remember, and I would look at these tall buildings and beautiful structures and beautiful property and just admiring that, you know, hey, that could, that could be me, maybe not the full mansion, but you know, I could probably, you know. It sort of inspired me to do something like that. So, I was born in Los Angeles again. We lived in the Watts area for some time, in Compton also, with my grandparents. And then we kind of moved around. We went to, one of the places I remember was living in Culver City, right on the edge of Culver City on Washington Boulevard and Venice Beach. So I remember spending a lot of time at Venice Beach riding my skateboard and, you know, swimming and just being a beach mom. So that's, that's still in my, I love the beach and I love the water. So, but in the early seventies, we moved to Wapato because my dad had some friends in Watts, the Watts Church, it was a Watts Apostolic Church that was a minister and they assigned him to start a new ministry, a new church in Wapato. And he was a good friend of my dad's and so he invited my dad to come along with him. My dad said yes. And my dad left everything. He left his business, he left everything, cars, everything, and he didn't receive any money for that. But, he left that, we came to Wapato and we moved into a neighborhood. It was all-white neighborhood. And one of the things that, that I can remember is, our first full day there, my, one of my younger brothers took off on his bike and he was gone for a few minutes, right? And a few minutes, after a few minutes, we can hear him yelling, "Dad, dad, dad." He's come screaming around the corner, "Dad, dad, dad," you know? And he slides into our yard, he's like, like he made it, right? He was safe. And just behind him was a group of about eight white kids on their bikes chasing him, calling him names, wanting to beat him up and so forth. So, that was our experience in Wapato in the early seventies. I remember having to fight with kids, with white kids, to get to the bus stop or, you know, we would go to my friend's house and a block over and there was one situation, we were walking, all of a sudden these, these kids just came over the fence and jumped us. And so we had to fight with them, but, and then our next-door neighbor, and these are all things that, that, you know, just come to mind, our next-door neighbor across the street was this big white man, about six-four, big guys, 250. He would always back up his car and run into our fence of our home. And one day, my dad was home for lunch, he parked the car in the front, he slams into my dad's car. And my dad comes out to see what's going on and this guy just starts calling him names and so forth and he pulls out a pitchfork and tries to stab my dad. And my dad was pretty good shape, pretty strong, he used to be, he used to box and he was able to get control of the pitchfork and pin the guy on the ground. And the police showed up and they, they didn't do anything, they just let the guy go, said not to do it again, slapped him on the wrist. So, but that was my, my welcome, our welcome to Wapato. But interestingly enough, is all those white kids are my friends now. I still keep in touch with them. I see them at the store, you know, we hug and we remember the good old days, but, and what's even ironic, maybe not ironic, but is many of them married Latinos and Latinas for spouses, which is, you know, but that was my experience. And then I graduated from Wapato High School, but I remember our teachers and, and this is why I'm, I wanted to serve on the board now, is my motivation is, I remember I was always told that us Mexican kids would be working in the fields and, you know, we would, so we were assigned to, in my junior, senior year, I had woodshop, metal shop, carpentry, and then I took maybe English and math, but most of my classes were within those, those trade areas. So, that was my experience. So when I graduated, I wasn't prepared for college and I went to YBC, I just wasn't prepared and I flunked, I flunked out. So, I decided, I burned every, I burned all my bridges at YBC because I just wasn't focused and I wasn't prepared, but, so I joined the military and went to North Carolina, which was a whole different, actually went to Missouri. We call it, Jennifer knows about this, is Fort Lost in the Woods misery, Fort Leonard Wood misery, right? Or Missouri. So, went there, you know, kind of gained some skills, maturity and got to, got exposed to a whole different culture where, in North Carolina. So we had the base, but outside of Fort Bragg, Fayetteville was a whole different time during that era. But, in the military, you know, I have, became really good friends with people, with individuals who I consider my brothers, and I still do after 30 years, and they come from all walks of life and all colors. And so, we never, we never considered anybody's color while I was in the military, it's just that we were there for each other and we were gonna survive and make it through whatever, you know, that was facing us. So I did that, came back home to Wapto and then just continued on with my education. But, one of the things that for me with my dad has been a really, really example, as you can tell, he almost got killed just for being his color, right? But he never let that stop him, never let that hold him down. He never felt sorry for himself, he never, you know, nothing. It just made him stronger. And he became the pastor of the church and he came to, that he came to Wapto to help start. And I always admired him for that because he, no matter what was thrown his way, he just, you know, persevered, I guess it was with God's help, right? That he was able to persevere, to be strong and just to continue. And that was a good example for me. And he always served the community, he was always serving, you know, no matter what time of the day or night, people in his congregation would call him and, you know, you would go and help them and give them money and get them set up in a home or give them food or counseling. And, you know, back then, if there was domestic violence, he would go talk to the judge and say, "Hey, I got this, this couple, I'm gonna counsel them, I'm gonna help them and if you only let, you know, them out of jail, we can, we can provide that." So that's something that, that always stuck with me, that just my father, that he was a servant leader and that he, you know, he was really, really wanting to serve and make our community a better place despite racism, despite discrimination and so forth. He started with nothing and, you know, now he's 84 years old and he's able to retire comfortably. And so, I just, you know, that, he's a big part of who I am and the way, my worldview and how I see things and do things. So, in a nutshell, that's me. And I'll just turn it over to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you. Some powerful stories in there. Reverend Davis?
Hi. I appreciate Martha and Raymond's story and Martha and I have something similar because my grandmother's father's father was French and he moved to Canada and from Canada, they called him French Acadians down to Louisiana, down to Basque, Louisiana, where my mother's father's family was from, the Becknells, who owned a plantation and they're still in our family today. And my grandmother's father worked for my great-great-grandfather. And when my grandmother and grandfather got married, my great-grandfather, Alfonso, moved to Plaquemine, Louisiana to oversee the Wilbur Plantation, which is in Plaquemine, Louisiana, where my mother was born. And there, my father, mother was there from New Rose, Louisiana. And my, as adults, my father, he lost his, his father who was an AME preacher at 10 years old and my grandmother remarried a Baptist preacher. And that's how I came about, through my father. My, my father's uncle, my grandfather Aaron, who was an AME preacher brother, was also an AME preacher, Reverend A.L. Davis, who formed the Mount Mariah Missionary Baptist Church in Orleans, Louisiana in the 50s, became part of the Southern Christian Leadership. In 1957, they, along with Martin Luther King, Ralph Abernathy, and those, formulated the Southern Christian Leadership at his church. And I was born in 1955. I, I know both sides of my family, on my father's side and on my, on my mother's side and know the history, this German, French and Spanish. On my mother's side, on my father's side is African, French, and Jewish. Had a great, I was born in New Orleans, raised in New Orleans, but always loved to go to the, to the country to be with my grandparents. I had both sets of grandparents. My mother's, mother and father and my dad's step-grandmother. And my, my, my mother's side of the family was Catholic, my father's side was my, my grandfather, which was my step-grandfather, Reverend Munger, was a Baptist preacher. And my, my grandfather, my mother's father used to take me over to their church while he'd go visit my, my great-uncles. My, my great-uncles and I got both sides of it and that's when I learned that my father, he skipped going to the ministry and it hit me. And my father was a very active individual in the civil rights movement along with my, with my great-uncle. And I never forget being eight years old and being at the "I Have a Dream" speech, but didn't know the significance of it. And then at age 13, a month before Dr. King died, got the courage to march with him and listened to the rally at my great-uncle's church and then watching them fellowship at my cousin's restaurant, Dicky Chase, piling and planning the Pullman's March on Washington. And we were, me and my sisters and my cousins, we were peering in and my, my dad came to shoot us off and Dr. King told him, "No, let him come in." And we got to sit and talk with him and he blessed me and told me, "One day I'll be doing what, what he's doing." And lo and behold, I'm doing it. I feel honored. I never thought I would ever serve on the school board, but I'm doing it. And it's, it just comes from, from my upbringing. I have educators, one of my mother's second cousins, Dr. Norman Francis was, he's the president emeritus at Xavier University in New Orleans. And having those types of people in my life just encouraged me in my latter years to go into, go back and get my education and I did. I went through the A system of four years of study to become a reverend within the AME denomination. And it's very vigorous and rigorous study. I've been blessed in my ministry in, October 28, 2014, at 12:58, my bishop appointed me to this church, Bethel AME Church, and it's been a blessing. About a year later, John, not John, oh man. One of the board members got off the board and he had asked me if I would do it and I submitted my, my application and Martha, Raymond and Graciela saw fit and along with John Verdick saw fit to appoint me to the board and it's been a blessing and it's been a blessing to serve with these, with Amy and Martha, Graciela and now Norm. To have a new superintendent to see where we are going now. And just to be able to see Dr. Dream's vision and dream come alive from this, that "I Have a Dream" speech and it's, and it's gonna be a reality. And to see the work that we're doing, we're doing a deep digging and it's gonna be uncomfortable, but uncomfortability is good for us to achieve equity and justice for all. And, you know, I'm just happy to be here and my wife's happy, happy wife, happy life and we're just enjoying the work that God has us doing here. And with those that, those of you who are working along with us to bring equity and real equity, real racial equity and real racial justice in knocking out the systemic racism in education as well as in normal, in instance. That's my story.
Thank you. So, part of what we're, I think we're going till 4:30 on this, am I?
4:20.
Yes? Okay. 4:20. Okay, so, what this was really intended to be about is, like I said, we are working to, we're working to understand the way that race and racism impact school systems as a part of our equity, our equity focus. Our equity focus is broader than just race, right? The, the goal is to eliminate- The, the goal is to eliminate any group-based disparities. Uh, one of the principles that we bring into this is that individual behaviors impact the success of individuals, but policies, practices, procedures, things that the system does, impact the um outcomes for groups. And so when we see group-based disparities, we want to address those. But race is, remains one of the places where the most profound disparities show up, both in school settings and in the larger society. And it's the one that we have the most discomfort um talking about. And so we have to build our skill set up to be able to talk about issues of race if we're going to really lean in and do the real work um of equity. And so this has been kind of the core approach with which we're doing. And so we asked you to kind of reflect about racial experiences um today. How have the conversations, the things that you've seen over your life impacted you? And you guys shared some powerful stories today. There were some powerful stories shared a few months ago. And those are all kind of at play, all of those things. Like I think about some of the stuff that Raymond shared about, you know, you, even when you experience a great deal of challenge, you can overcome, right? You can, you can figure out how to overcome the system. But at the same time, this board is in a position to where you have the opportunity to engage and work with leaders to make it so that the system is not so difficult to overcome, right? So we can overcome obstacles. People of color, we can do amazing things and figure out how to climb over the wall. But if we can in our, use our positions, our roles to make it less difficult, make it not require quite as much. Uh, that's, that's really the work of um of equity. And so first, being able to name and see what the barriers are, that's a, a crucial part of that. And so I would like to ask you guys, if you were to put a percentage, um if you had to put a percentage to how much race impacts your life today, what, what percentage would you um would you arrive at? So I'll, we'll work backwards and start with Reverend Davis. If you had to put a percentage to that, what percentage do you think race uh impacts? Would you say race impacts your life today?
I would say eighty percent.
And what, what makes you give that percentage?
Well, it's, it's, what makes me give that percentage is how people perceive who I am because of the color of my skin and how I dress. Sometimes when I dress in, in sweat suits or whatever, I get a different reaction than if I'm in a suit. And I'm looking at different, I follow them in the store. You know, uh it, it, that old attitude has not changed. And so I, I become bold and I say, why do you follow me? What is it? And I pull out a lot of money. I say, I have money to buy what I need. And that's why I do that. That's, that's why I say eighty percent.
Marcus?
Yeah.
I just want to take a moment. Artie, are you here for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so we're going to start doing that at four thirty. You're welcome to stay if you want to. Um, we're doing some uh professional development for the board in the area of equity. So you're welcome to stay and listen, but if you want to take, take off and then come back at four thirty, that's okay too.
Okay, I'll be back.
Okay, thank you, dear. Okay, Marcus.
Okay. Raymond, would you, what, what is a percentage? What would you put as the percentage and why?
You know, that, that's a, I, I was, I'm struggling with that because that's difficult for me to quantify or even to attribute to just race. You know, I could be in a different situation where race doesn't matter for me or for anybody else. So it, it, it could be, you know, my, like on the board, race doesn't matter. It's our position, we're board members. Or if I'm on my job, my expertise is what people focus on and not my race. If I'm in a, a certain situation, you know, where it's different than maybe my race is more noticed. So, I don't know, maybe I, I, I don't know, in terms of um of, of my personal development, I guess, you know, we go through, as Latinos, as a Latino, I went through, you know, being, going through that machista, macho type of uh, you know, identity to, you know, Aslan and, you know, this is our country to, you know, we're going to fight for that, you know, and doing that kind of stuff to, you know, I'm, I'm an older, I'm, I'm, I'm old, I'm nearing retirement. So I think I might develop into something else than I was, than I was as a kid. So that doesn't really uh affect me as much. But I know that my early upbringing does really impact me today, you know, just knowing how I was treated and mistreated, whatever, in, in the educational system. It does drive me, motivate me to do the work that I do now. So if I were to use that example, I would say it's probably close to ninety, ninety-five percent. Race does uh drive me and motivate me. And so that all kids can have the same opportunities in education, so. I don't know if I gave you a clear answer or not, but.
You, you gave me, I, you, you gave me a couple of answers in there. Uh, I want to refocus the question, make sure we're staying on what the question is. To what degree does race impact your life? Um, that's the question is to what degree does race impact um your life? So Martha, what you, what you got to say about that?
Well, I'm sort of conflicted with that question. Um, I don't know that race impacts my personal life, but just a very little bit. But my work on the board and my work, my, my readings and discussions that I have with friends, that's, that's much more race-based than what my personal life is. So I guess probably maybe forty percent, all told.
Thank you. Uh, Graciela.
Um, I guess if it was a percentage, I'd say a hundred percent. Um, every day, completely aware of, 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 of my race, of the race of people around me. I, um, pretty much every, every meeting I'm in, I'll, I'll, I'll do a quick calculation. I'll count the people of color in the meeting. Um, you know, divided by the total number of people there. It's, it's just something that I'm always uh completely aware of. I, you know, listen to the news, I read a lot of newspapers, um, watch different things that are focused on race and how uh different current events impact race. Um, uh, politics, um, for sure, he, here, hearing and understanding the things that are happening on a political level. I, I see and, and feel how that um impacts people, uh people of color. Um, how, how um things in the media, how the media responds to, to different uh same events, different, different, people from different ethnicities, you know, when you look at um domestic terrorism, you know, if it's a white person, you're not going to call them a domestic terrorist. You're going to say they have mental health issues. If it's a person of color, you're immediately going, going to use that term. So I see that every day, I hear it every day and, and completely aware of it and, and feel that um all the time.
Thank you. Norm?
You're on mute, Norm.
There, I should have been using my ASL. Anyway, so I, I think about, um, when I think about how it affects me personally and just in terms of moving about, going about my daily life. Of course, I don't go much of any place right now or do much of anything except go to the store and come back. But, but in terms of daily life, I'm, I'm not impacted so much about race other than who I'm interacting with and who, who I'm dealing with as a person. But again, when I think about my work on the school board or my work in education, I think about it a lot, all the time. And I'm always trying to learn more and and improve myself and, and how I, how I think about things and what I learn about people and improve how I interact with people. So in that sense, I would say it's, it's probably around seventy, eighty percent because race in, in influences everything and culture. And uh, you know, and then I think about, I, I really picked up on what Graciela said about how you interpret how things are perceived in the world and how the media treats people in the world. And I just, I mentioned a book that I read, I sent out to you guys earlier. I just finished reading a book called You'll Never Believe What Happened to Lacey. And I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it was written by Amber Ruffin, who was an uh black writer on Saturday Night Live and used to be in Second City. And her sister, Lacey, who was uh, she's a director in healthcare. But they're talking about all the things that happened to them as a result of, of being black in America and, you know, going to school and how they're treated by teachers and driving down the street and how they're treated by policemen and, you know, things that I don't personally experience all those things. But it creates some pain in my heart when I see that those things still happen. And when, when we talk about education and the little things that teachers say or opportunities given to kids or taken away from kids. Uh, one of the striking things in, in Lacey's uh book was it, and she loved art and I love art. And that, and one of the first things that happened to her with the art teacher at school is she, she does a beautiful piece of art. And the teacher doesn't believe that she could possibly do that. So she just rips it up in front of her as an eight-year-old. And you just go, you know, those stories just break your heart. But then um, and I had, I didn't experience those kinds of things, but man, it just, it just worries me that that kind of thinking and that kind of stuff still goes on. And and all that stuff in politics, it just happens all about race. I mean, it's so evident in everything that's said and done, how much that's about race. And we have a lot of work to do in our culture.
So I'm going to push just a little bit. I only got seven minutes left, but I want to use Norm as my uh one that I, that I push with. But Norm, you kind of mentioned that, you know, there's different experiences that other folks have that you haven't had. Um, and so you don't personally experience those things. But why don't you personally experience those things?
Because I'm a white male.
And so.
So I, I still have privilege in this culture.
So when you're, when you're not experiencing those things, is race impacting you?
Hmm.
Or I'll ask it another way.
Yeah.
If, if your race is the reason that you're not impacting, that you're not experiencing those things, then your race, is your race impacting you positively in the, in those situations?
I, I don't, I'm not sure.
So the, or let me ask maybe Reverend Davis, do you find that um your interactions with people are different, base, maybe different? Um, their interaction with you may be different on account of your race, but you may not be aware of it sometimes?
Yes.
Like are people thinking about your race at times that you may not be conscious of them thinking about your race?
Yes, that happens sometimes. And then once you share who you are and they see who you are, then they begin to look at you different. Right? I, I uh, I've had a unique, I have had a unique life. And, and being able to relate to all, all types of persons in humanity. And what brought that on is being in the music business at age eleven with my great, with, with my godfather, George Ween, who was married to my mother's second cousin, Joyce, who was a jazz singer. And got to, and seeing the different sides and seeing how when I was in with them with the music, how I was approached different, how I was treated different and then versus not being there and being like just in my, in, in my, in my little town, how it was different. You know what I'm saying? I, I looked, I, I wasn't that person, oh, hanging out with, with Sarah Vaughn and working with this person. You see what I'm saying? And, and, and that, that helped me learn how to maneuver. Right? How to maneuver when I'm in different circumstances, how I could maneuver in the White House when I went the first time I went to the White House. And, and, and how I can interact with those lawmakers and and, and different people from different statues of life. And it, that, they gave me, but then when when I, when I get back in the hood and I'm with my friends and might be riding down the street and then next thing you know, the police pull us over and then, you know, we all, but human. So that's, you know, you have to know how to navigate through that. And I learned how to do that.
I guess, um, since we're getting to the close, there's three minutes left. The um point that I'm trying to push us towards is I tend to be more where Graciela is, that race is a factor, it's impacting us a hundred percent of the time. Sometimes it's impacting us in negative ways, sometimes it's impacting us in positive ways. Sometimes our race is protecting us from certain negative experiences. Sometimes our race is bringing about certain negative experiences. But people are interacting with us differently on the basis of our race all the time. And what I will do is in modeling, keeping it personal, local and immediate, I'll speak for myself. But I interact with each of you differently on the basis of your race and considering my race. When I talk to Reverend Davis, the conversation is very different than when I talk to anyone else on this screen. Because I have a certain affinity that I share with Reverend Davis that I know there's certain things I can say a certain way, he understands. There's certain common experiences that we have that he understands. And so it changes the interaction. My interaction with Norm will be different. The way that I frame the question might be different. The way that I respond to something might be different. And so whether you're aware of me interacting with you differently or not, that's happening. And so this percentage is really, and I'm not saying specific to me, but there's all the people that you interact with likely have a different interact, who your, your racial identity is a part of what they see when they interact with you. And it, it is a factor in the way they interact with you. It's about how aware, how conscious of you, of it are you? And so these percentages and what Glenn Singleton would argue is, these percentages, instead of reflecting how much race impacts us, they reflect how conscious we are of the impact of race on us. Um, and what I was just talking to the staff and Martha, the King about, and this is the last thing I'll, I'll say on this, is that there are different consequences for people of color being unconscious of race being at play in certain settings than it is for, for white people. So um, there are settings where it's not safe for me to be not conscious or aware of race. I have to keep that in the forefront or it may not be safe for me. Raymond described circumstances where it would not have been safe for you not to be mindful about your race in certain settings. Um, when you are unconscious of race, you are unconscious of racism. You can't see how it's operating. And so part of our work together will be working to build our consciousness of when race is at play, how race disadvantages us at times, how race protects and shields us at times. Um, and when we do that, then we'll be able to extend that to see how is that operating in the system? And what are those impacts for kids and families and, and do the work of, of repair? So um.
Dr. Pickleton, can I, I, I just have to share this if, if I may. So I, I understand what you're saying and, 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 and I understand what the author's saying. And personally, I think. And personally, I think it goes a little deeper than that because we're more complex human beings, right? So I would say that culture is also a factor. So I can walk up to any group of veterans and boom, I'm accepted no matter what. Regardless of what branch of the military, my color, my skin, how tall, how thin, how whatever. Because I'm a veteran, I'll be accepted fully, no matter what, right? I could go into different situations, you know, like with Norm, we connect because he has some roots in Nebraska, right? When I was talking about Nebraska, I can see him smiling and kind of remembering things about Nebraska, right? And so those are, I think those things, I don't think we should discount that as well, that culture plays a part. And race is part of culture. So I just wanted to throw that out there.
The messaging that race is always impacting us does not mean that there are not other things that are always impacting us too. So age is always impacting us. Gender is always impacting us. Anything that people can see and make a prediction of is always going to be a factor at play. But we need to recognize the role that race plays in interactions. And I would suspect that even within a veterans group, there will be some differences. The way that you're going to be treated than a white veteran, or you may have to actually surface the fact that you are a veteran to get the privileges associated with being a veteran sometimes, that may be automatically extended to someone else in another setting. And so, but we're going to continue the work. We're just starting like, we're accepting non closure. But that's the main piece that I wanted us to get at is that we need to be aware of race without dismissing things that are not race.
Because my stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Marcus. This was great. I gotta tell, I gotta share with the rest of you that 50 minutes is not long enough for this. I feel that we get at about 40 minutes and we just start cooking. And then we have to stop. And so I would encourage us all to think about whether we want these sessions to be longer than 50 minutes. I'm not going to make that decision for you. You have to make it on your own and we have to come up with a group decision about it. But just something to think about. This was great. Marcus, thank you so much for leading us through this. I had a big aha when you were talking to Norm and asking your question. I thought, you know, I don't think of white as a race. And when I stop to think of white as a race, then of course I'm affected by it 100% of the time. But until that moment, I didn't think about that. So it's, it's interesting what we're learning here. We're going to take a bit of a break and we will reconvene at 4:30 for the business part of our day and let Arti lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance before we start the MLK presentation. So we'll see you all in a bit.
Hello, thank you. Hi, Arti. This is Arti Carrillo. He is a fifth grade student here at Martin Luther King Elementary.
Thank you. Martha, do you want to go ahead and?
Absolutely. Welcome, Arti. Welcome, Mrs. Lucero. We had Sid on here a little bit ago. I don't know if he's here yet or not. There he is. We're going to start with the pledge and then, Arti, if you want to hang out just a couple of minutes longer than saying the pledge, I think board members would like to speak with you, okay? Okay. Jennifer, could you please project the flag? And Arti, feel free to start whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nice job, Arti. So you're a fifth grader. Who's your teacher this year?
Mr. Navarro.
And what, do you know what middle school you're going to be going to?
Probably here in Wapato.
Well, that's, I think Mr. Navarro is excited to hear that. He's, he went to school in Wapato too. You did a very nice job. I'm going to let the rest of the board say hi to you, okay?
Okay.
All right, then, you know, that's a cool name. I really like your name. It's awesome. Thank you for joining us today. Thank you for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Just want to say, hey, keep up the good work. Keep studying hard and keep doing your thing and step by step, you'll knock out your goals and your dreams. And just want to wish you the best and the best, the best of the best, right, in all that you do. And we look forward to handing you that diploma when you graduate in just a few years. They're going to go by very quickly. So once again, congratulations and thank you so much for being with us today. And go Wolves, right?
Yep.
Hi, hi, Arti. My name is Graciela. Thank you for being here. You did a really good job on the Pledge of Allegiance. And I hope you really like the rest of fifth grade and that you have fun in middle school.
Thank you.
Hi, Arti. This is Pastor Davis. And I understand you're gonna go to Wapato, all right? I do a lot of work with the Wapato Wolves. You play sports?
Not yet, but I'm hoping to.
What sport are you gonna play?
Football.
All right. You go over there and teach them how to play football and I'll be there to cheer you on, man. All right? Keep up the great work and I'm proud of you. I remember you from when I spoke at MLK for Martin Luther King Day. I remember you. Thank you. Keep up the great work.
Thank you.
Hi, Arti. Do you like to call me Arti? Okay, welcome. Thanks for joining us today and we must be doing a really good job there for your principal to pick you to join us today. So again, I want to wish you well. We're going to miss you if you go to Wapato, but maybe someday you'll come back and join us here too. Wapato is a pretty good school though. After all, Mr. Navarro came from there and he turned out pretty good, didn't he? So we'll, we'll miss you when you go there. But again, thanks for joining us today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arti. You're welcome to stay. But if you have stuff like homework or other things to take up your time, we understand completely if you have to sign off. Again, thank you for being here, Mrs. Lucero. Thank you for suggesting that Arti join us. He was a great addition to our meeting today.
Yes, thank you, Arti. You have a good evening, okay?
Okay, thank you, guys. Bye.
So I'm gonna call the, I should have called the meeting to order before the pledge, but oh, well. Jennifer, could you call the roll, please?
Donald Davis, Jr.
Here.
Graciela Villanueva.
Here.
Martha Rice.
Here.
Raymond Navarro, Jr.
Here.
Norm Walker.
Here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. I do want to call the board's attention to the fact that on January 15th, the legislature passed Senate Concurrent Resolution 8402, which extends the governor's emergency proclamation, including 20-28 and the termination of the state of emergency pursuant to RCW 43.06.210 or until rescinded by gubernatorial or legislative action, whichever comes first. What this means is that the proclamation that governs us are being able to meet in person or not being able to meet in person, according to the governor's proclamation 20-28, is still in effect until such time as we are out of emergency status. So we continue to operate in this remote fashion. And I expect at whatever point, if we ever get out of emergency status, we'll decide how best to meet. And we will continue the way that we have been operating since, what, February, March? Almost a year now. So having said that, let me see if I can find the agenda. There it is. Okay. The first item on today's agenda is one that's very special to us. We really, really miss being able to visit the buildings and get the school presentations in person. This is the next best thing. And so today we have with us Principal Lucero from Martin Luther King Elementary. And is Sid here?
Yes, he is.
Okay. And Sidney John, who is, I think, your assistant principal, correct?
Yes.
And so we're just gonna turn the, turn the meeting over to you and you can do your presentation. And then I expect that the board members following your presentation may have some questions or comments. Thank you for being here today, Maria.
Yes, thank you. Before I present my screen, I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank you, the board, for your support. I'd like to thank Trevor for his leadership. And I'd especially like to thank my staff. Sid, being my leadership partner. My instructional facilitator, Ashley Mandrell, who just has really supported me. I consider myself an instructional leader and then COVID happened and we had to learn how to do everything, as you know, virtually, and she has just been an amazing support. Our paraeducators, who too have just adjusted and do an amazing job serving our students in a small group setting. Our kitchen staff, who welcome our families every Wednesday, with Mr. John being there to support as well with a smile and meals for them to take. And last but not least, my absolutely amazing teaching staff. They are resilient. They have approached this time with a growth mindset and always willing to problem solve for our students. So with that, I will present my screen. All right, and I do have one screen. Jennifer, can you see that?
We can see it.
Thank you. Okay, so what's been going on at MLK? During this 30-minute opportunity, I'm going to share with you a couple of video, a few video clips for you to see, just teaching through a teacher's lens. The bulk of the presentation will focus on connecting the dots and really how MLKs work and our Building Action Plan or initiatives are educational moves and how they align with our district strategic plan. Throughout, I'll be highlighting celebrations. And then I'll close with explaining how we're continuing to grow as professionals for the purpose of improving student outcomes. And at any time, feel free to stop me should you have any questions. So I was fortunate enough to be on the core planning team that had the opportunity to provide input and was able to collaborate with other professionals within the educational system and in the community. So I am very proud of our district strategic plan and grateful for that opportunity. So I had the opportunity when I came to MLK to draft this vision and mission. And every year, our instructional leadership team evaluates and analyzes the initiatives and actions the prior year to ensure that we are truly living by our mission and realizing what we've drafted as our vision. So that is our vision and mission here. It is important for me to note in the mission to provide all students with an equitable quality education to become successful. And our staff truly believes that it goes beyond academics. And so in our vision, you'll see that we've encompassed successful learners, but also productive citizens of strong character. So here is just an overview of the demographics of our student population. So 90% are Hispanic, Latino, 8% are white. 4% are English language learners. 94% are students who are of low income. 12% are migrant and about 10% of our students with disabilities. So I'd like to start with goal one, the early years developing a strong foundation. In the first graph, what you see there is trend data that goes back to the 1213 school year, all the way through 1920. And what I wanted you to take away here is that every year it's different. So in the 1213, we had 12% of our students who entered kindergarten ready in all six areas of development and learning. And on the right-hand side is more of a close look at the 1920 school year. And those six areas are the cognitive, language, literacy, math, physical and social emotional areas. So you can see 2015, 16, we had a peak there of 56.1% of our incoming kinders ready in all six areas. And then that dropped down to 17, the 1617 school year, and this last 1920 school year at 15.8. So given that information, I am so proud of what our kinder teachers are able to accomplish year after year. And that is what is here on this next slide. So what you see here is, on the top is our Kinder Reading Screener or our Dibbles Screener. And this is from 1819. This is the latest data that I had available to me through the online platform. So at the beginning of the school year, composite, meaning that there are different measures included in this composite score. And at the beginning of the school year, 1819, we had 69% or 63 students who needed intensive support. And so our goal is, of course, to greatly decrease, I mean, really to zero. By the end of the year, what you can see there is that there were three students needing intensive support. And the blue on the top means well above, the green is at benchmark. So those combining, then we had 78 students who were at benchmark or above. Any questions about that particular data set? Okay, and then at the bottom of this slide, you'll see the Kinder end of year math assessment trend. So keeping in mind that we often have 12% to 15% of our students ready for kindergarten. The 1516 school year, we, the blue, students were at benchmark. 1617, you see the blue there, same for 1718. 1718, and I am not the type of person that makes excuses, but there are things that happen in that particular year. We had two teachers that were on maternity leave. And so it does make a great impact when you have two long-term substitute teachers in the same grade level. And this year, we also had one of our kinder teachers who looped up to first grade. But still, considering their readiness coming in, our students by the end of the year made great gains. Any questions about this slide? Okay. So the early years does include, as you know, third grade. And so for third grade or the student outcomes that we look at, one of them is our performance on the, the smarter balanced assessment. So 1516 was my first year here at MLK as the building principal. And so you can see we are inching upwards. When I came, we were at 21% students meeting proficiency. We did drop 1617 to 16%. Then it increased to 26% in the 1819 school year at 39%. In the second bar graph, what you see there is our math performance for our third graders, 1516 at 25, 1617 at 27%, 1718 at 43, and 1819 at 42%. So I really attribute our growth to our teachers engaging in inquiry cycles over the course of the year. Really looking at data, but really moving beyond just admiring the data and saying, oh, well, that's too bad, or that's great. But really digging into the data and saying who, down to the student level. And who are the students who did not meet proficiency? Who were those students who were at the cusp of being at the next level of proficiency? And then more importantly, what are the particular skills that we need to target as a team, as individual teachers, so that students continue to show that growth over time? Our leadership team meets twice a month to also engage in school-wide inquiry cycles. We kept backward calendar during our IOT retreat every summer. The data that we're going to be analyzing school-wide that directly support our school-wide goals. And every team provides data, every team provides student work, student samples that show the progress and each team speaks specifically to their action steps. What is it that they're going to do in direct response to what the data is saying students are in need of? Any questions about this slide? For goal two, all students empowered, connected, supported, resilient, engaged. I included our school-wide star expectations because we really believe that these expectations can be applied not only at school, but really anywhere our children go. And our goal is for students to internalize our star expectations. So at the beginning of the year, teachers take the time to, they use a, a strategy that is called the T chart for social skills and they ask students, what does it look like when students are solving problems or people are solving problems? What does it look like to take responsibility? What does it look like to always make good decisions? And what does it look like when you're respecting self, others, and property? And not only what it looks like, but what does it sound like? So what words might you hear students using when they're solving problems? What words might you hear for the other star expectations? And so again, the goal being for them to internalize them. And then throughout the day and throughout the school year, when we see them demonstrating these star expectations as being specific in our feedback. Thank you for solving problems by moving when you sat by a friend that you knew you were going to be talking to. And so we're very specific not in our feedback, not only in academics, but also in our star expectations. So I wanted to share a little bit with you our Center for Educational Effectiveness survey data. So 1819 to 2021 is what you see here. The first one, the rules about behavior are equally applied to all students in this school. This is important to me because we've done a lot of calibration to ensure that the rules about behavior are equally applied. And so you can see that we had a 9% increase in percent positive responses by students. And the second one, most students are respectful of others at this school. So 1819, 51%, 2021, 65% with an increase in response positive of 14%. What, the, the reason I selected this second piece of data, the, the one that says most students are respectful of others is because we found that when we analyzed discipline data, that disrespectful behavior showed the highest number of office discipline referrals. And our amazing PBIS committee came together and came up with a plan. And so we did some very targeted work building wide focused on being respectful. And, and you can see here that, that, that students are seeing that more students are being respectful at our building. Any questions about this slide? Here's another piece of data. This is around social and emotional learning. And in the area of belonging and identity, 1819, we had 77% students respond positively and an 8% increase from that time to this year of 85%. And those domains and skills encompass those that are listed at the bottom, a sense of belonging, relationship building, personal identity, and social capital. Relationship building is really at the heart of everything that we do. It's not just something that we included in our mission, in our vision to make it sound good. We know that, that really humans, when humans know that you care, they are more likely to work harder for you. They want to impress you. They want to do their best. And you can have all of the skill in the world, but if you don't have the heart, we know that you won't have those same positive outcomes. So we have really, really worked on establishing positive relationships with our students, community building. And that's continued as well, especially now during remote teaching and learning. Any questions about this information? I wanted to share just one strategy because we know that sometimes kids don't respond to the interventions that we're putting, putting forth for all students. So we do use our student risk screening survey to identify students who need a little bit extra support. This is one of the strategies that our tier-two team identified. It is called the High Five Students. And using that survey screening data, we identify five students who need a little more positive feedback in their lives. And why do we do this? We do this to increase those positive interactions. So these are students that sometimes might feel like they're not heard, or they're not acknowledged, or they don't have a connection with an adult in, in the building, in the school. And what we do is we put the pictures of these students in the, in the lounge. And anytime any staff member sees them, we take a brief minute to, to say hello, to give them a high five, to address them by name, and just offer a positive word of encouragement or, or recognition. And we did notice that these students were opening up more. And so I want to thank the, our tier-two committee, our building student educational team for identifying, this is just one of five strategies that they identified for reaching the students who, who are not necessarily responding to the, to the strategies that we use for the entire building. Any questions here? I wanted to include an example of how we're, how teachers are community building and remote learning. So here, this teacher used Paddlelet. This was, I believe, a second grade teacher. And she simply asked the question, what did you do this past weekend? And they can use pictures, video clips, text to respond. And so here you can see a student posted a picture of their dog. Many text responses, I played with my friend. I went for a three-minute jog and read a book. And, and they just spend a little bit of every day checking in with each other. And we really think this is important, especially during this time. So in terms of an area of growth, currently MLK is part of the Inclusionary Practices Pilot. Why? To ensure that all students know why they are in school and all students have access to tier-one instruction. So we are building our capacity in inclusionary practices as leaders. And we are, this fall, hoping to be able to start implementing inclusionary practices at the fifth grade level with our resource room teacher. I've been working and learning from those at Roosevelt who are seeing great success in their implementation of inclusionary practices. And so here, what you see is the attendance and the gap between the students with disability represented there in yellow and the students without disabilities. So engaging in some improvement science to identify reasons and implementing strategies and monitoring our progress is our goal for next.
Principal Lucero?
Yes.
Could you do us the favor of defining both inclusionary practices for the board so that they have firm understanding and you may want to define improvement science as well?
Sure. So currently with our special education model, students are, they go to our resource room with our resource room teacher. And unfortunately, to be able to receive special education services are often taken out of the core subject area. So for example, they might miss the first 30 minutes of their math instruction or the last 30 minutes to receive that additional support with, from the resource room teacher. Inclusionary practices involves keeping children as much as possible in the classroom. And the general, general education teacher works very closely with the resource room teacher to not only provide the core content area to our students with this, with specific disabilities, but in a way that is very supportive and still meeting the goals and objectives of an individualized educational plan. So the goal is that they have access, all students, but it's because we're talking about students with disabilities, that they have access to core content and that they're not taken out of that core content time to receive support in the resource room, which really is counterintuitive. So with improvement science, plan, do, study, act, PDSA. So you plan, how are we going to respond to the need that we're seeing? And right now, what our plan is, is for, so I do have a fifth grade general education teacher and our resource room teacher a part of this, this project. And they're learning together with the leadership team, our IF and our MTSS specialist. And so they will work together to co-plan instruction and our resource room teacher will actually be supporting in the classroom so that students are not removed from core instructional time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any follow-up questions for Maria on inclusionary practice or goal one or two?
Maria, I just wondered if general ed students benefit from inclusionary teaching as well, even if they may not have an IEP or be identified in any other way. They're just a, a general ed student.
Well, what I can tell you from the trainings that I have attended is that they absolutely can benefit. And to me, the students with disabilities and the English learner population, you know, just removing kids from, from core content to me, just, it just does not make sense. And to me, it makes sense that we build the capacity of our teachers so that they can either design specialized instruction with a resource room teacher to meet the needs or for English learners and being knowledgeable in how to serve not only their academic needs, but their linguistic needs as well.
Thank you.
Questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm watching the time. So I just wanted to share even now our focus on attendance. So the arrow there is pointing to Martin Luther King. This is from November 30th. And so we have really, we know that if students aren't present, then they're not learning, they're not connecting and, and getting their social and emotional needs met. So I'm really proud of our efforts. Our teachers are, you know, they are sending reminder messages, calling parents, our support staff are doing the same. We've conducted probably close to 150 home visits for students that have, had not been participating or showing low participation and just trying to find out what is it that our parents need? What do our students need so that they can engage and learn and be successful? I'm gonna skip over this piece here, but just briefly, here is again attendance. This has been an area of growth for me as an instructional leader. Really, this year has pushed me to think outside of the box. I know that when we go back in person, I mean, home visits had been done, but really in the past for discipline. But I could see how we can continue to do home visits, even when we come back in person to find out what is going on and finding out the stories, finding out our family's story so that we can better support them. So again, on attendance, you can see October, November, and January, I wanted to provide you more updated attendance. So really trying to decrease the number of students who are at a 20% or more absences. So you can see that in October, we had 16.8% of our students with 20% or more absences. January 10th, we were down to 80. So just trying to decrease that number and getting students connected and really excited about the opportunity to bring back some of our students starting February 8th for in-person tutoring. For goal three, I want to draw your attention to the Growth ELA decile. So this is out of 10 deciles and you want to be in the blue. And so our growth for us is, is very important. And of course, so is proficiency, of course. And we know that if we continue to see the growth that we are seeing, that we will see that in, in the overall proficiency levels as well. So you could see our English language arts growth there and then our English language proficiency, which is more towards the middle. So this is our number of students meeting proficiency in their progress of English language skills. So in 17, we were at a decile of three out of 10. And the year 18, three, and then the, the 19 school year at, at a six. And then if you look at the last column, our final school score, we're inching upwards. When I came to MLK, we were one of the schools in the bottom 5% of all Title I schools in the state for performance in all areas. So I am very proud of our ELA growth, of our English language proficiency growth and that we continue to increase our final school score. I know this is a lot of information on one, on one slide. Are there any questions about this particular slide here? So here, what you see, the purple arrow is pointing to MLK. Our English learners grew half a decile point on a 10-point scale of growth in two years, but based on SBA, English Language Arts and math scores combined. So all of the other dots represent the YSD schools and their EL growth in, on the SBA and ELA and math combined. And so we, you want to stay above that, that line that you see there. And when, in 2013, we were in the bottom left quartile, which is where you don't want to be in dark orange. And so again, really proud of, of the growth. When you have over 50% of your students who are ELs, you must target that, that group of students, not only their English language growth, but also their academic needs. So again, here is a comparison with Martin Luther King and the Yakima School District. The top, the yellow line represents the percent of our English learners who met standard based on the English language proficiency assessment that's given every year. And then the percent progressing. So you, you want to see the percent progressing increase. You can see that our percent progressing, 1617 was at 59, 1718, 59, and 1819 at 50, whereas the district was at a 40%. So really focusing, like I mentioned before, on the English language growth of our ELs. Because if they don't have the language needed to be successful in the content, we won't see that growth there either. So proud of that. Really excited about goal four and our opportunity to implement a strand of dual language this fall. We currently have a designated English language development block where English language proficiency standards are intentionally taught. So the English language proficiency standard So the English language proficiency standards are the driver, whereas the rest of the day, the content is the driver. So really monitoring the progress of the English language proficiency of our students during this time and giving them feedback, specific feedback so that they can continue to grow. As professionals, we're growing our own knowledge. So last year, we engaged in a Clarity for Learning book study. And this year, we're engaging in a book study, developing, excuse me, assessment capable, visible learners. And so this work stemmed from some classroom walkthrough feedback that we gathered. So in the Clarity for Learning text, it's really important for students to know what they're learning and then why they're learning and then how they'll know when they're, when they are, when they have been successful. So red means that, for example, in the first top-left pie graph, we had 27.1% of our students who didn't know what they were learning. So we really focused on communicating what students are learning in a way that is understandable for them, but that also includes content language. And then we were really targeting, explaining to students why they're learning it. And the book study that will start this year will focus on becoming partners with students in their learning so that they can set goals, monitor their own progress, and teachers giving them specific feedback around those goals as well. Any questions about that work? I wanted to share just our community commitments and those that we partner with and support us. And that is a list here of local businesses that we have partnered with. So briefly, an overview of distance learning. I will share first a kinder, a very short video of, they were learning about jobs and at this point, their, their job was to explain what they would like to be when they grow up. And you'll notice that the teacher is really focused on them using complete sentences, which is one of the language skills that kindergartners need to master. So I will share that now. And thank you, Jennifer, for muting my sound.
Okay, so I'm not just gonna say teacher, because then it's kind of confusing, because if I were just speaking to a random person and I walked up to them and I said teacher, they would be like, um, okay. So you have to let them know what you're talking about. So I want to be a teacher, okay? Let's remember to be respectful. So Camila, I see that you're struggling, sweetie, so go get a drink of water. Care of your needs and then come back when you're ready.
No, because I'm itchy here and I keep trying.
Okay, then go let your grandma know, okay? I, I unfortunately can't do anything about it. So you just have to make sure that you're telling your grandma. So let's see here. George, go ahead and unmute and share what you would like to be. Remember, use a complete sentence.
Okay. This time I need to lose a complete sentence. Okay, okay.
Okay. So what would you like to be when you grow up?
A police officer.
Can you say, I want to be a police officer?
I want to be a police officer.
Thank you, George. Hold on, Mateo, we're taking turns.
Oh, I would be an army and I'll wear boots.
Perfect, I love it. All right, Sita Lali is not with us today. Ezra is not with us today. Jared, go ahead and unmute and share what you would like to be when you grow up.
I want to be a teacher whenever I grow up.
Oh my goodness, I love it. Sophia, go ahead and unmute and share what you would like to be when you grow up, Sophia. You're still muted.
I want to be a nurse.
Oh, I love it. Thank you for sharing, Sophia. Okay.
There we go. So because, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, because of time, I won't show you the other two, but I just wanted you to have an inside look at the reality of our teachers. So that is Ms. Noemi Messia is one of our amazing kindergarten teachers. Thank you for this opportunity. Do you have any questions? I'm going to stop presenting so that I can see your faces.
Thank you, Maria. That was a great presentation. I wish we had more time.
Thank you.
Do board members have any comments or questions?
To comment, Maria, I want to thank you and John for the great work that you guys are doing. And I enjoyed the, the teacher with the young kids. It gives us an idea of what the teachers are going through with that age level of kids, to see the excitement of the kids. But continue to do great work over at MLK, you know, that's one of my favorite schools. And I'm there to support you guys whatever way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say, I really enjoyed your presentation, Maria. I oftentimes listen with the ear of an organizational development or developer. So everything that you said was music to my ears. I really enjoyed everything that you said in terms of, you know, the instructional programs being based on data and providing supports for students, you know, the structure that you've put into place, the, the building teachers, you know, your understanding of human behavior, motivation, you know, how you collaborate and you, you work with teams. And it's just amazing the work that you're doing from what I can hear with the presentation in terms of leading school improvement. And I also can just have to say, I'm discerning genuine caring and, and just passion for kids and for education and your enthusiasm. You know, you're looking forward ahead already and what can you do and how can you do it better and what other programs and things that you can do. And so, and not to mention very professional and just know the content. I mean, I mean, I was just, again, it was just music to my ears. Also want to thank Mr. John for the work you're doing, your leadership as well. You guys are doing amazing work over there. So thank you, behalf of those students, and keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate your feedback.
Oh, and I really appreciate your data-focused approach to identifying problems and measuring results and progress and outcomes. Really appreciate your presentation. Extend thanks to you and your staff for all of the good work that you're doing. It looked like on most of the indicators, they were going up. And so that's always something that, that we really like to see. We really enjoyed the video at, at the end and seeing the kids and kind of getting an insight into what it's like for teachers to teach and, and you know, how, how hard it is for kids too. So really enjoyed that last clip there. So thank you so much for all your work.
Thank you, Gracias.
I don't, I don't have a lot to add. I think it's been pretty well summed up by my colleagues, but I also really deeply appreciate the, the efforts, like the, the high five thing where you target kids and really make sure they don't become invisible and that you're really building connections with the kids that you struggle with. And I also was, at the beginning, I was asking myself, well, I wonder if MLK is going to be one of our dual language schools? And I was pleased to see later in the presentation that it's going to be, because I think you probably find that you're going to increase the scores of those ELA kids when you become fully dual language. I think the research shows that works really well. So I'm glad to see that's going to be happening at MLK. Just gracias por tu trabajo.
Muchas gracias usted.
Maria, I really loved your presentation. It touched on data, it touched on the social emotional piece. And we know that both teachers and students are suffering under this challenge that we have upon us with the remote learning. I, I appreciate your focus on attendance more than you can know. And the fact that you're, that you and your staff are physically going out and finding these kids and seeing what you can do to bring them back and make sure that they're a part of the MLK family again. That's, that sends a very strong message to the students and to the families to know that you and your staff care enough to make that effort to, to go out, knock on the door, say, you know, we miss you, is there something that we can do to help you? We'd love for your student to come back. That really makes a difference and it touches my heart to hear that you're doing that. I, I, I hope you don't take the fact that we didn't ask many questions to mean that, that we either understood everything you said or that we don't care. We really do care. We've had your presentation as a part of our board docs preparation for this meeting for a few days now. So we've had a chance to kind of dig into the presentation and familiarize ourselves with your data. So I think we can access the other videos that you didn't have time for today. And I'm sure that board members, if they have any other questions, will get ahold of you through either Superintendent Green or Dr. Darling and, and get their questions answered. So thank you so much for the wonderful presentation. Thank you to Sid for all of your efforts to make sure that our kids are cared for and that their, their needs are being met. We really appreciate the time that you've taken today to be a part of this meeting. Dr. Green, do you have any closing words?
Just very briefly, I would like to share that both Maria and Sid as leaders are the type of leaders that I would want my kids to have. So if I were starting out in the Yakima School District, I would want my children under their care. It's because of their love, compassion, but also the accountability that they bring not only to the building, but to the extended community, the way that the accountability permeates not only through the building with teachers and students, but with parents. And I appreciate that from, from both of them. So that's all I would add. And thank you both, Maria, Sid, for being here this evening with us.
Thank you all for this opportunity again.
You're welcome to stay if you want. We have some other board business to take care of, but we completely understand if you have other things to do with your life.
So thanks.
Thanks again for being here.
Have a good evening.
You as well.
Thank you.
That was a wonderful presentation. I really miss, I mean, I really, really miss not get, being able to get into the buildings.
And I love, I love systems thinkers. Oh, I just, I just love when I hear this, like, again, like music, it just kind of flows. So I really enjoyed it. So I had just had to make one more comment.
You had, I could see you had a happy heart listening to her. Next on our agenda is the results of our refunding. We talked about this, what, a month and a half ago, I guess? Maybe, maybe longer than that. But we have Mark with us, I think. And Becky is here. And so we're going to just jump right into that, that part of our agenda. Welcome, Mark.
Happy to be here.
And you didn't have, and you didn't have to drive over a snowy Sadus Pass.
Yeah, I still, I still, like, you know, I'm, we all missed a little bit of our life that we had and now I wouldn't want to do it in the dark that much, but it is a nice drive a lot of times in the fall. So I'm looking forward to where we, I get back into buildings as well, Martha, so.
I see over Sadus Pass and in the dark is not my best idea of a good drive.
No, it's not a good drive. I'd agree. To pretend to agree, would you like me just to jump into the presentation or?
Let me just express, first of all, my gratitude for your, your work on this. I also would be remiss if I did not call out the hard work that Becky Neeson engaged in to make this a reality along with her team. So thank you, Becky. I, I don't want to omit you at all. So is there something you would like to add before we turn it over to Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we're gonna share some great news with you tonight. You might have had this on your calendar, but last Wednesday on inauguration day, we launched into the bond sale and Mark's gonna give you a rundown on all of that. And it, it went fabulously. And so, yeah, all the hard work has, has paid off and Mark's gonna share that great news with you tonight.
Thank, thank you, Becky. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Mark in just a second, but you reminded me, and I want to share this with the board, we were engaged in a, a lot of work on that day and we kept getting updates from Becky on what was happening with the bonds. So I think as, as Dr. Darling put it, she was geeking out all over the place on what was happening with our bond. So I, I am excited that we did not have to sit through that entire process that as a cabinet, we may not understand or appreciate to the degree that Mark and Becky appreciated. So I'm, I'm excited to have the Cliff's Notes version tonight, Mark. And with that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'll see if I can, let's see, if I can go to my, here we go. So first of all, I would agree with you that, on a couple of things. One, the, the hard work that Becky and the team put in really makes a big difference when, it makes such a difference when you have a client that is, you know, paying attention to the, and, and doing the geeking out, I suppose. It's a good, good thing. So I'll just quickly go into the bond market update, where things were since last month, our refunding goals, review those and what the results are and where we go from here. And again, please interrupt me, I can't see what I'm presenting. So if there are questions, please just go ahead and ask along the way. As you mentioned, Trevor, it was inauguration day when we did this and we actually had some conversations following the events of the sixth, whether we should be pricing bonds on inauguration day. We decided to move forward with it and ended up being, working out really well. Market was really stable moving into that. We like a stable market. But the bottom line is, we were able to refinance the district's outstanding bonds at the lowest interest rates in, in history. So it's a great time to be borrowing money on the district's, behalf of the district taxpayers. And as a result, we're gonna be saving taxpayers $2,868,230 over the next 10 years. That's a little bit higher than what we had in the board briefing in December. So we're really happy the markets stuck with us. One of the goals was reviewing the district's credit rating with Moody's Investor Service. They're an international service that looks at your finances and, and makes a judgment on your ability to repay the bonds. And they're very complimentary on the district's fiscal responsibility. And they're, you know, very happy with the work that you as a board and administrative team do. I'll say that Trevor and Becky did a great job representing the district on the rating call. Makes a big difference when they really understand the district, but also what the rating agencies want as well. So that was a great result. Your credit rating of AA3 is just a few notches below AAA rating, which is what you have when you get the state guarantee part of that. So that's why investors are willing to buy your bonds at very low interest rates, because not only do you have a state guarantee, but you've done a very good job maintaining your own standalone rating. So a lot of numbers on this page, don't read, I think the ones in yellow highlighted are the most important ones. You were paying 5% on the bonds that were, that we refinanced. And that will and that will go down to an astounding low 0.873% for the next 10 years. That's quite a drop in the interest rates. And one I think we would all like to have on our homes, began resulting in 2.8, almost $2.9 million in savings. So really from here, all that's left to do is wait for the bonds to close in February 10th. This really is a great news for the district. And I'll leave my presentation up for a minute in case there are any questions, do you want me to run back to it? Otherwise I'll stop sharing so I can see the group as well.
Are there any questions for Mark? Mark, I think we're all just thankful that there are people like you and Becky who geek out over these things.
Well, I definitely do. I made a part of it, and I think Becky's had a lot of fun and so much fun that she's committed to do it again in just over a year. Is the next opportunity in, for the next refunding, it'd be actual larger bond issues. So we're hoping the market stays stable and we'll be seeing you, you know, sometime next spring.
Very nice. It's nice to be able to share with the community the fact that we are being such good stewards of their tax dollars. And I trust that there's a media release or something that's going to go out about this. I see nodding heads, so good.
Actually, it's going out within, within just a couple of minutes.
Excellent, excellent. So we save, we save the taxpayers a few dollars and get an interest rate on those bonds that I would dearly love to have on my house. So that's, it's good news all the way around.
I'll say it's been a great pleasure for me to work with your team again. I always like working with the, you know, the Yakima School District and look forward to, you know, continuing on into next year.
Thank you, Mark, that's very kind. Trevor, do you have any closing comments?
Just thank you, Mark, appreciate the presentation, appreciate you making time for us. And again, thank you, Becky, for your hard work and the work of your staff.
Mark, you're welcome to stay if you want, but we understand if you have other pressing things like dinner or something like that.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Take care. Next item on our agenda is a brief legislative report. It will be quite brief. The legislature is continuing to churn through a lot of bills, some of which have some impact on local school districts or student learning. I've been asked to testify on WADA's behalf on House Bill 1208, I think is the number. It has to do with lap funding and increasing the flexibility of that, of the lap funding that we have available to us. I want to thank Dr. Darling and Erin Chaplin for providing me with some stories about Yakima. I'll be working with WADA staff to make sure that the talking points are hit that they want, they want me to hit. And I'll be testifying remotely. Thank God I don't have to drive over the mountain for two minutes worth of testimony. But I'll be doing that on Friday, sometime between 10:00 and noon, I think, so. That's that. Are there any questions on, that board members have about particular bills that they're aware of?
Yes, I was, I was following with WADA, I was following on last week's webinar. They talked about three bills and I haven't looked again this week to see what happened with them. But one was House Bill 1121 on emergency graduation waivers. That had, we had those for last year, but that they needed to redo that in order to look at graduation requirements for this year, it was only for one year. And also House Bill 1162 about options for credits in the career pathways as well. So do you know the status of those two bills and what happened with those?
I do know about the waivers bill. We had some members of the Legislative Committee testify on the waivers bill. Surprisingly, there was some resistance on the part of the committee for that bill. So I don't know, I don't know what that's going to look like, you know, when, after the sausage gets made. But if, and I don't have any information at the top of my brain about the credit options bill, but you can go to, you can go to the legislative website, ledge.wa.gov, and just plug in a bill number and it will take you to that particular bill history and bill information. So in the search bar, just plug in 1162 and it should take you right to that bill. But if you wanted to see what WADA has in its documentation, if you go to the Strategic Advocacy tab on the WADA website, there's an option for, you can get into a, like a spreadsheet that will give you information about whether we testified, that sort of, that sort of information. So those are a couple of places that you can look.
Yeah, I just, I thought you might just have that at your fingertips on those.
No, unfortunately, sorry.
And I don't know how they did, I did put a plug in to Representative Corey and Representative Dufoe on House Bill 1226, which is on simple majority for school bonds. And I don't know what became of that either, that was going through committee on Thursday, next, last week, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to let you know that I tried to push them a little bit on that.
I appreciate that, thank you. Any other questions from board members?
No questions, but thank you for your continued leadership on legislative issues, Martha.
Thank you, Graciela. Mr. Superintendent, next item on the agenda is COVID-19 update.
Thank you, President Rice. I will save my comments for after the presentation. At this point, I will pass this to Jewel and then to Stacy for their weekly update. Jewel, you're on.
Thank you, Superintendent Green. Soon as Jennifer pulls up the slides, numbers are going down again, so that's, that's a good thing. Here we go. So daily numbers are dropping again. Today's number was 114, but that's a two-day total. They did not break out Sunday from that, so we're in double digits instead of triple digits again, so that's good. This is since May. So again, we had our peak and we're starting back down the hill, so that's, that's a good indicator. Our rate per 100,000 is down to 729 as of the 24th. So that's dropped quite a bit. We were, our high was 1100, so that's good. This is the rate in our region. Our rate on this one is 740 because this is taken off the state website and they're 24 to 48 hours behind us. And the one I update before that is 729 is up to date as of today. So, but you can see that the rates all over are dropping down again. Our zip code rates, they did update as of January 19th. They will update them again later this week for the weekly. But you can see the red bar is lower than all the rest in our zip codes. We're going down all across the zip codes in Yakima County and in the school district. Hospitalizations have gone down quite a bit, we're at 28. So that's good, and only two intubated today, so that's a positive trend. This is the region's hospitalizations. Again, we're at 28, Benton County is at 53, but they hadn't updated today as of 5:00. And then for the South Central Region, we've dropped 36% from where we were a week ago, which is really good for hospitalizations. Our percent positivity in Yakima County, we're at 28.9. We dropped down to 23, but 28.9 for as of today. And then our positivity over the region. So Kidittas and Columbia County again are the lows for our region. But Benton and Franklin County are also coming down and Walla Walla came down quite a bit. So all the numbers are going down, that's what we want to see. Things are getting much better. We still have a ways to go, but they're definitely on a downward trend. Anybody have any questions?
Downward in this case is good.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, thank you, Jewel. I know you weren't sure about the start time, so I appreciate you hanging around and making sure that you could update us on those numbers. Stacy, can I pass the baton to you now?
Yes, thanks Superintendent Green. So our numbers reflect what Jewel has been sharing as a decrease. So this, this last week from January 18th through the 24th, we only had nine investigations, which is significantly lower. However, seven out of the nine were positive. So we are seeing, what do I want to say? And basically, our positive rates are staying similar throughout the weeks. On the, and we're still conducting testing, of course. What I wanted to share a little bit about was vaccinations. We had put out interest survey for both 1B Tier 1 and then 1B Tier 2 through 4 for our employees as well as their families for interest. And we did that last week and we tallied numbers today. And we have over 1,900 people interested in receiving the vaccination, which is awesome. We're working with the Office of Emergency Management to organize and be able to administer those vaccines via our healthcare staff on our campus as soon as all the paperwork is signed and goes through. So good news on that front. Looks like we're going to have a provider and in the next few weeks, we'll see kind of where we're at. But we had some good news today and we have a lot of interest with our employees and their families. Any questions?
Do we have a timeline on when that might possibly occur?
I can barely hear you, Norm, but I believe you asked for a timeline.
There we go, do we have a timeline on when that might possibly occur?
You know, no, we don't. I just heard today that this week's supply delivered to Washington was 900 vaccines. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, we've got through the different categories, we've got 1,900 people. And what we're trying to do is organize, so as soon as we can get those vaccines, we're ready to roll. You know, our clinic place, we're ready to roll and get that taken care of. Last I heard, I know that Yakima Department of Health just put in to be a provider and they were talking about possibly towards the end of February, but we're looking to try what we can do to get that ramped up a little higher. So, or I should say, not higher, sooner.
And I have a selfish question in here too, is, is our spouses, if we can take advantage along with the district of vaccinations through the district, are spouses eligible as well?
Yes, the next, the second round we put out for the Tier 2 through the 4, and even in the, in the B1 Tier 1, yes, spouses are, we did employees and family members. Because the concept is to, obviously, the more people we vaccinate, the better we support that exposure mitigation of the virus throughout our schools and our community. And then down the line, if this all works well in its organization and distribution, we will be working with students and their families as well. So again, it's a massive organization of effort and no one entity can accomplish all of that. And I think that that's what's being discovered as we move forward to try to vaccinate our community. So we are, we're organized, we're ready to go, and we just need a little more information to find a plan, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can, I'll send that form out to all school board members if you're interested in signing up for that.
Sure.
Okay. I think we just sent it to district users at this point because we wanted to make sure everybody was where they needed to be. But yep, I'll get it out to you.
Great.
Any questions I can answer, any other questions?
You just answered mine.
Okay. You're good to go.
I think there are some, at least some board members who are quite eager to get the vaccine. We're only going to the grocery store right now.
Well, it seems interesting to me that, that they're doing mass vaccination plans all around the state, but Yakima, which has one of the highest rates in the state, seems to be left out of the loop. I mean, they're doing mass vax in Spokane and mass vaccinations in Wenatchee and, but it's like Yakima has sort of fallen off the earth. So, yeah, I'm, just to get that taken care of.
Yeah. They did a mass vaccination down at the Benton Franklin Fairground here just the last couple of days. I think like 1,500 people. It just, I just don't understand why we don't have that kind of effort going on in Yakima County. I just don't understand it.
We have a few clinics and hospitals, you know, that are providers and are definitely, you know, doing their part. It's just that we're so big that, right now, we don't have the capacity. So we're, we're trying to help grow that capacity with the work that we can do, the work that our healthcare team can do. And again, working with Bob Noe, cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. Bob was a great help today in some of the questions that we received. But it's a work in progress, we want to get those vaccines to our employees as soon as we possibly can.
Patience, patience.
That's what they keep telling me.
Keep up the good fight, Stacy, thank you.
You bet, take care.
Thank you, Stacy, thank you, Jewel. These briefings that you all provide to us are critical for us in helping with our decision-making process. It's, we've got some tough decisions ahead of us and to have this kind of knowledge on a regular basis is really, really important. So thank you so much. Bye-bye. Trevor, do you have any comments before we move to the last agenda item?
Very briefly, I just again, thank Jewel and Stacy, thank our COVID response team. I think I was really kind of selling them, maybe building them up too much last week when I said we have five people responding for the Yakima School District because I found out that our previous presidency only had one person responding for the country. So knowing that we have five, I feel much more comforted about where we're headed. And I also would, would just relay to the community and to the board that there is a strong movement of, with the superintendents to approach the Yakima Health District for reentry for high school students relatively quickly. I will have a report, suggestion, recommendation for the board by our next meeting just on what our possibilities could look like, especially given the information that we've seen and the downward trend that we now project to continue downward. And I think as you all know, we have, thanks to, in large part to Stacy's work and Jewel's work, we've been very accurate so far on the count. So look for that in the next week, and that's it, thank you.
Excellent. We've reached the, what I think is the last agenda item, items of board interest. Do board members have anything that they'd like to share under that heading?
Yeah, I have an educational question, actually.
Oh my gosh.
Health question or a COVID question for Rob and Trevor maybe, but I had a colleague approach me and ask about, do we, do student teacher in and like counselor internships? Do we have internships and that kind of stuff going on right now? And then who at the district level does someone contact to set that up?
Stacy, want to answer that one?
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Darling. I'll take that on. I do that, Norm. And yes, we have student teachers. We have about 11 different universities that we have articulation agreements with, as well as counselors, as well as psychologists. Anybody looking for interns, we, we do place them in appropriate capacity with the agreements that we have with different universities. And so have them, have them reach out to me and I'll get them set up. We've, we've, we've less students interested in doing their student teaching online. So, so that's been, we've dropped down a little bit, but we have a very robust internship, apprenticeship, observation, student teaching program that runs throughout our district K-12.
Okay.
Yep.
Now I know.
Yep.
I can't understand why somebody would be less than excited about doing their student teaching remotely. I mean, gosh, really? Any other items of board interest from board members?
Martha, I just, I just wanted to personally thank Dr. Pimpleton for the work that he's doing with the board. He's, I have to say, Dr. Pimpleton, you're, you're, while we might not always agree on everything, you're, you're, you're helping me to think a little deeper, go a little deeper than what we've usually done before, you know, to challenge some of those old, old beliefs and the, you know, worldviews. And, and I really like the, the activity today, going, going backwards and looking at our history and how that impacts. So just wanted to commend you for the good work that you're doing and leading the board. There's such an important and hot, hot topic, right, across the country. So I appreciate your work and guiding through this, through this work. And looking forward to developing, you know, the full definition and policy and the work that we'll be completing here soon. So once again, thank you, Dr. Pimpleton.
Thank you. Learning, learning is a change. So if we are, feel the same way at the very beginning, it will be a waste of time. So we'll see how close we are by the end of the process.
That, that presumes that there is an end, right?
Well, we'll see as, where we're at as we go further along. Cause you're right, we're never done.
Thank you, Raymond. Are there any other items of board interest from board members? Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything for us this evening?
No comments.
No comments. Do we have a need for executive session?
We do not.
Okay. So unless there's something for the good of the order, going once, going twice, we are adjourned. Thank you all so much for hanging in with us. We will see you next week.